That's one way to raise money.
Hi, Dave. How you doing? Good, very good. Outside.
Here.
Right, like this. I call to order the May regular meeting of the Minuteman Regional High School School Committee. I'd like to start with a, I'm gonna make a motion to move Agenda Items 5C, 6A, and 8A to the very beginning of the agenda. Let's put that on the table and we'll discuss why. So that's my motion for the second break. Mistress Assistant.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, good evening, members of the committee. I just wanted to inform you that there is a Planning Board meeting in Lincoln tonight that I'll be updating you on from one of these items in the agenda. That meeting starts at seven o'clock and was scheduled in combination of Minuteman in order to assist us in our building schedule. I'm required to be there at seven o'clock, so I asked the Chair if I could deliver my three reports early and then I will excuse myself and then the meeting will continue in Lincoln.
Very good. Discussion, the item on the table. Seeing no further discussion, all in favor of the motion on the table, please raise your hands and passing unanimously. Thank you very much. It brings us to Item 5C, Budget Update.
On the budget update, I just want to report to the school committee that the FY18 budget has been approved. We've been to nine town meetings in all time, twelve town meetings, passed the budget, so we're all set.
Is that the extent of that report? That's correct. Okay. Item 6A, School Building Committee Update.
The school building committee was still working through the permitting process in the town of Lincoln in Lexington. As I mentioned a few minutes ago, we do have a Planning Board meeting this evening with the town of Lincoln. There are just a couple of open items remaining that we believe we've satisfied all of their requests. We're hopeful tonight that that hearing, that public hearing will close and then at that point the Planning Board will issue orders of conditions and have a public appeal process that will probably take about thirty days. At the conclusion of that thirty days, that would allow us to commence, assuming we have the other permits, that we'll be able to move forward. In conjunction with that, we're also been working with the Lincoln Conservation Commission concerning the wetlands requirements and the drainage issues related to the new building project. They did, they have not, they have closed, they're going to be closing the hearing on May 31st, but in order to expedite the process, they're gonna be issuing the orders of conditions upon closing the hearing. Typically, the hearing will close and then they have twenty-one days to issue the order of conditions. They decided to keep the hearing open and then at closing they will issue the order of conditions and then they'll take, I believe, the ten-day public appeal process and at that point we'd be able to commence. So if you look at the calendar between, if we're able to close the public hearing on the Planning Board tonight and then the clock starts roughly thirty days until permitting from the Planning Board and that aligns pretty closely with the same schedule as the Conservation Commission. So we're very optimistic that if we're able to move forward, that we'll be able to start clearing trees and start to do some site work and mobilization mid-June, which is right on schedule and what we anticipated. There is another committee we're working with, of course, because we're traveling through towns, we're working with the Lexington Conservation Commission. They were here onsite last Saturday reviewing the wetlands on the Lexington side of the campus. We'll be going through Lexington on May 30th. We're optimistic that maybe we'll close that hearing at that time. A priority, however, has been focused on Lincoln, given the phasing of the project. So that's the update from the School Building Committee. I'd be happy to answer any questions.
Great, done. We move on to Item 8A, Inspector General's Request for Documentation.
Yes, the Inspector General has been informed in previous meetings, has been asking for documentation surrounding COVID on some professional development services that we've worked with staff, the Tools for Schools contract. We've been responding to those requests. Superintendent and myself met with the Inspector General's office a couple of weeks ago to discuss the professional development programming and the benefits that are offered to staff and now enough the benefits of the district overall. From that meeting, there was some additional requests for information that we're in the process of complying with. Inspector General will be talking to additional staff to get a better feel for the program and will continue to comply and cooperate with the Inspector General as the process moves forward.
And is that the entirety of your three reports?
Yes, it is.
Very good. Very well done. Thank you very much. And let us know. Thank you very much. Great. Chairman's Report, finished. Student Report, interbruce.
Good evening. Nice to see you all again. We have been very busy here at Minuteman. We have been very busy here at Minuteman. As the spring warms up, we have had the chance to have some great events here at school. There are so many students here who work hard and contribute to so much. I wish that you could all meet every senior here, but since you can't, I'm going to tell you about just some of their amazing accomplishments. The senior class, myself included, are getting ready for graduation. We have completed over a hundred and fifty senior projects and portfolios that are being wrapped up. About ten seniors pilot an electronic portfolio this year, hoping to make a program that will increase the number of e-portfolios for next year. We have been receiving acceptance letters from several different colleges, including UMass Ann Harst, Wentworth, Salem State, UNH, Endicott, Bentley, U Michigan, Pratt Institute of Art in New York City, and Purdue, just to name a few. We are all looking ahead to the future, all looking back on certain memories, including these. In early childhood, Ed, the students have had an active role in the Cradles to Crayons donation drive all year. Here is a pic of some of our students participating in the program. On Friday, April 7th, Tanara Holmes and Aaron Noel went to the Massachusetts State House to participate in Student Government Day, along with the opportunity to hear Governor Baker speak about the state of the greatest state in the country. The students were given information about issues that students face in their lives and they are able to take part in the debate about these issues. Tanara and Aaron were able to experience the roles that house members play in the legislative. Here is a pic of Aaron and Tanara. These are the words of swimming coach Carrie Bernstein. "Since Sean guitar makes us all look good," here's a picture of him winning his CAC Commonwealth Athletic Conference All-Star class. But it should also be mentioned that he was selected by the National High School Swim Coaches Association as an academic all-star. This is only awarded to students with high academic standards, along with performing well athletically. Congratulations, Sean. I also want to give a shout out to the student ambassadors. This club of thirty-plus students, who were advised by Sheila Nagel and Terry O'Brien, are called upon to be the faces of Minuteman and come to events and rallies fear. Here is a picture of some of them at the Dinner with Your Teacher Night in April, showing their usual spunk. The Minuteman Players staged a night of one acts in early April. The play was well-attended, including school committee member David Horton. Senior Catherine Maxwell, who also created the program, anchored the evening by acting in three of four plays presented while senior Ryan McGonigal uses metal fabrication and joint technology skills to create the most complex prop the Minuteman Players have ever used. Here it is, A Working Ferris Wheel Seat. This past weekend, twenty-six members of the Minuteman Community Service Group did the Twenty Mile Walk for Hunger and raised over $1,000 for the Forty-Ninth Annual Project Bread. This was our seventeenth time walking. Here are a few of those members. We had our annual Spring Up Carnival on Friday, May 5th. We kicked it off with an all-school prep rally with a shout, a shout-out to all winter and spring senior athletes in lacrosse, softball, baseball, tennis, swimming, hockey, boys' and girls' basketball. These athletes stay late, work hard, and represent us, and we wanted to congratulate them for their hard work and accomplishment. After the all-school assembly, students participated in our joyous talent show, where a faculty-student basketball game. The talent show directed by Mr. Tunnel and Mr. Rafter of the music club gave a stage to twenty-eight super-talented students and four teachers who displayed quite a range of talents, such as singers, instrumentalists, solos, small groups, a student magician, and a Rubik's Cube solver who did it in twenty-nine seconds. Our junior/senior prom had an aquatic beam this year under the sea. Two hundred and eight of us took a night away at the Newton Marriott. What a beautiful night it was despite the rain. Here are some pics of our night, along with some pics of Spring Up.
I just wanted to run for a minute so you guys could see some pics.
Thank you.
Thank you.
And is that the end of your report?
Yes, it is.
Ian, is that a working Ferris wheel seat? Does that like rise to the ceiling? Does that mean by working?
It rocked, it rocked.
Everybody scream together.
A new Ferris wheel in the new building.
Ferris wheel, don't let anybody know that. That was a very interesting and informative report. Thank you. You gave me a really good idea of what things like at the end of the year. Very good. So the Chair, Ian, by accident skipped over public comment, so we're gonna go to that now. Is there any public comment? I think we have a few people waiting to say something, unless it's like a band that got lost. That's very good. We move on. Item 5A, Report on Skills USA and Request for Field Trip Funds and Approval, and who's running the show on that item? Mr. Dillon.
I can do it if you want, Cyrus.
You can?
I know those topics.
Please do. You're awesome. I thank you.
Right over there.
You can actually take any of these seats here, but please introduce yourself. You have to push the button.
My name is Colin Kelly. I'm the president of Skills USA in Minuteman here. We had a, this was a very good year for us, I like to believe. We had, in total, an out-of-state competition with forty-four members competed. Twenty-four of those members came back with medals, eight bronze, four silver, and twelve gold medals, and we are honored to have of us several of our medalists here, and I'd like themselves to introduce themselves, state their name, what they competed in, if they're moving on to Nationals or not.
You guys can all stand.
They can just speak loudly.
Why are we started over here? Go ahead.
I am loudly. They've been here. I am Nicholas Moi. I competed in humanoid robotics and I, thanks, I'm sort of along with Alex DuSette.
Wait, ask them what talent.
Yes, so please mention your name and you're from.
I'm Concord.
And you're from?
I'm from Wakefield.
So I had two of three. It's Alice. I don't know, should I introduce them or should we?
Wonderful time. Go ahead.
My name's Kendra Bell. I'm from Missouri, Massachusetts, and I'm a senior here in the Environmental Science Program.
And she won a gold.
And the career pathway is business management.
Allison Perk. I'm from Saugus, environmental senior.
I'm Allison Buefler. I'm a senior in environmental and I competed in career pathways. And I'm from Memphis.
My name's Ben Eaton. I'm from Concord. I'm in biotech and this is one of my partners, my other one who made it today. We competed in career pathways, human services, and we got gold.
Nick Delore, from Concord. As you said, we competed in career pathways and we got gold, so we're gonna head on to Nationals.
Aaron Noel from Memphis. I'm a junior here at Minuteman and I got gold in employment application process.
I'm Ethan Princess Wright. I competed with Adam Powell in web design, but he's not here today. We got gold.
I'm Jonathan Meister. I'm from Arlington. I competed in mechatronics. My partner could not be here today and I got bronze and I'm not going to Nationals.
And I am Alex DuSette from Wakefield, stated earlier, and I competed in humanoid robotics with Nick and we got silver.
So one thing I'd like to say is that this was a, we had forty-four people go, which is a little low for how we usually have, but the amount of talent we have is much more concentrated. We improved in areas of engineering. We won more medals in engineering than have career pathways. We haven't had someone compete in that for the past three years. Employment application processes, exciting competition to have us compete in, and web design, I think the last night somebody competed in that was several years ago. So overall, we have a highly concentrated amount of talent in this group of competitors.
You didn't say where you guys were.
Oh, I won a gold medal in community action project. I go with my friend Brian Courtney, who's my partner in this project, and we are going to be competing at the national level as well.
What about the Janine Baker Award?
Oh, yes. I also received the President's Volunteer Service Award for Skills and the Janine Baker Legacy Scholarship as well. And then as always, we are here again to ask for funding for the event. It's good to be studying National Leadership and Skills Conference, so we are happy that you have supported it for all the years I've been here. You've supported it for as long as I've been here. We hope you will continue to support.
And Mr. Kirsten, do you have something that you would like to?
I do, yes. This is a slide, this is a whole bunch of pictures that we took at the Skills Convention of the students. It has a little music that goes along with it, very appropriate for this evening. It's a little bit long, but I hope you enjoy it. The students have never seen this, by the way.
You felt so kind and gentle and I know if I'm giving, oh, your kindness, kindness, dirty. My admiration. I'm bound to thank you for it. For everything you've done, you're wonderful. I want you to love me, my generous, dirty love, when you're asleep, anyway.
I would just really like to thank the advisors who took over for Mr. Egan this year. They did an excellent job considering the amount of time. I know Mr. Kirsten joined in halfway through the year. They did a wonderful job and I'd like to thank them.
Thank you. Now, you mentioned something about fundings. Let me ask you a question. Can you just melt down your gold medal?
I wish I could.
No, it doesn't work that way? Okay. So we have a motion here, but the motion doesn't specify a number of dollars. So do we have to know how many dollars is involved? Does that not yet bill?
It was submitted.
That side? That's not a number somewhere, one of them. Good. I think that should be added, Alice, when you make the motion, which you're. Great. We can say, no, in the range of, in the range of what?
I'm going to approve the out-of-state overnight field trip and funds for Skills USA National Leadership and Skills Conference, June 19 to 24th, for the 17th of the 18th, Louisville, Kentucky, as presented for the amount of $29,984.
As may be, as may be feasibly modified for circumstances.
As may be reasonably modified by circumstance.
Great, great discussion. That was easy. Seeing none, bring him to a vote. All in favor of the motion, let's get the police racing in. Thank you very much. Unanimous passes unanimously. And thank you all for your work and your success and your attempts and those of you who are moving on to Nationals, good luck. Okay. Report on Community Service and Learning Group Trip to New Orleans. Who is presenting that?
Well, Mr. Kirsten, once again, the fabulous Joffrey together pictures with music. He involves in everything. Just go out here, he's already involved in things. I'm calling you. Hi. Before you tell the truth, because a couple of our students actually have to leave to get the seven o'clock bus, who came from, these kids are so active, they just came from a softball game. So I just wanted everybody who went on the service trip, please stand up so that everybody can see you. They're not all here, but there's about half of them. And Dr. Boquillat had actually asked me to ask the students if they would like to say how the trip impacted them. They won't say, they won't talk on it, no, like I usually do. But before they leave, I was thinking that if any of them here, and say they had to, if they would like to just give an impact statement about the trip and then we can see the video. So anybody who's about to leave, wanna say something? Okay. Go ahead, Olivia.
So it kind of.
Loudly pleased so we can all hear you.
So it kind of impacted me because we all heard stories of all the people that witnessed the hurricane and it was like really sentimental to us, I guess, and it was kind of interesting to work for them on their houses.
Thank you, Olivia. Anybody else wanna add anything? And Lily?
I just wanna say that I think I learned a lot that week and I think one of the biggest things I learned was you don't need to have a lot of money or a lot to give to help another person other than everything you can offer, you know, physically. And I feel like, I feel like I could see, when we were working on the houses, we weren't doing like fun work, we weren't painting, we were screwing in drywall and we were putting mud on the walls. It wasn't glorious, but you know, we could see things changing in the house and that was really heartwarming to me because I knew this person would have a home to live in soon, too. I think two months, was it about two months later is when she's gonna be able to move in? She's probably moving in pretty soon. And that's just really crazy to me that I was able to lend a hand in that.
Anybody else wanna add anything?
Before the kids pick up, before you guys pick up. From the principal, from the entire staff, to the school committee, this is the best of the best right here. This is just some of them, but I wanna thank the community. But I want to thank the community service group, the Skills USA students. They do a tremendous job. Most of them, as you can tell, do sports. They're our student ambassadors, so they're spread thin. So to take the time that they gave to thank Connie and Cliff and Mrs. Boquill, who helped tremendously, and Michelle. And everyone...
Psych course.
Yeah, we're not here. I think everyone just deserves a real big round of applause for what they do.[629.24][629.34](Applause) I know they make my job very easy and the whole Minuteman family is extremely proud of both groups, so thank you.
And just raise your hand if you went on the Walk for Hunger as well. Because a lot of these kids just walk for hunger as well. They're amazing kids, they're amazing. Thank you. Do you want to say something, Yara? Sure?
Yeah, sure.
Okay. Anybody else want to say anything?
Little. Um, okay.
And I was also... I was also in the picture of the skills.
Yeah, I was in skills, but I did not place...
He's a freshman.
Yeah. So going to New Orleans was really impacting because we live in like Massachusetts, where we don't have to worry about a hurricane coming and tearing down our whole house. And down in New Orleans, that happened. A huge hurricane came down and tore down people's houses, like moved it, did crazy things. And people are still recovering from that now. That was supposed to nine years ago?
Twelve. Eleven.
Eleven, twelve, one of those numbers. It was a long time ago.
Hurricane in the flood, they did a job.
Yeah, and people are still recovering now. And it was just amazing to be able to be a part of helping people rebuild their house and rebuild their community there.
Thanks.[712.14][712.24](Applause) Since I didn't do it.
Of course, it's definitely solid.
Think about the generations and the say we want to make it a better place for our children, our children's children, so that they, they know it's a better world. For them, think they can make a better place.
There's a place in your heart, and I know that it is love. And the place was brighter than tomorrow. You, they try, and find there's no need to cry. The place, there's no hurt or sorrow. There are ways to get there if you care enough for the living. Make a little space, make a little space. Heal the world. Make it a better place for you and for me and the entire human race. There are people dying if you care enough for the living. Make a better place for you and for me. If you want to know why, there's a love that cannot lie. Love is strong and only cares what joyful you mean. We try, but you'll see in this bliss we cannot fill. Your dream is starting existing and starting to be. And it is better ways. Nothing I've always broken, like a better world. Make a better world, heal the world. Make it a better place for you and for me and the entire human race. There are people dying if you care enough for the living. Make a better place for you and for me. And the dream we were seeking, we're gonna join the race. And the fire we want to leave, we're shining bright. And what keeps spring, these birds that find its own. The flames that see this promise ever be, be of love. Fly so high that our spirits never die. In my heart, who you are, all my brothers. In a world with no fear, together we'll cry heavy tears. Submissions turn their swords into plowshares. We do really good there if you care enough for the living. Make a little space, to make a better place, heal the world. Make it a better place for you and for me and the entire human race. There are people dying if you care enough for the living. Make a better place for you and for me. Heal the world. Make it a better place for you and for me and the entire human race. There are people dying if you care enough for the living. Make a better place for you and for me. Heal the world. Make it a better place for you and for me and the entire human race. There are people dying if you care enough for the living. Make a better place for you and for me. Heal the world. Care enough for the living. Make a better place for you and for me. There are people dying if you care enough for the living. Make a better place for you and for me. 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 Where we live. You and for me. For our children. You and for me. Where we live. You and for me. For our children. You and for me. Where we live. You and for me. For our children. You and for me. Where we live. You and for me. For our children.
Say, you notice some of the pictures there. Nobody likes insulating, for those of you who are insulated. It's very itchy, it's really kind of an ugly job. On the very first day we were down there, that's the thing. Me and Mr. Romano talked on the way down, if they even ask us to insulate, we're going to go on the plane and come back. The kids insulated this whole house. And if you could have seen the work, it was really amazing. It was really amazing, it was very touching.
Staining clay and drywall is no fun either.
Yeah, very... You know, they work for money. They were amazing.
And is that the end of the report?
Yep.
Thank you so very much and welcome.
I have the opportunity tomorrow morning to go to the meeting of all of the committee chairs in the town. I have some really good material to report on Minuteman. Thank you.
Keep you busy, thank you very much. Academy Development Team report. And who will be giving us this report today?
Katie Smith and Amy Peral.
Very good, it's going to be...
No, we will not.
That's good.
We're not in the... It's not fair to fall behind.
Now, my understanding is that this affiliate stands open and out.
There is. You guys flip to, it should be in your packet, it's Integration Showcase, 2016, 2017 integration. Page 10. So again, my name is Katie Smith, I'm one of the Academy Development Team members. This is Amy Peral, she's another member of the team. Dr. B had asked us to stop by the school committee meeting tonight to kind of update you on some of the recent stuff that the Academy Development Team has been working on. So I'm going to report out on the integration showcase. So about two months ago, we put out a survey to the staff team, asking them what their training needs were moving towards this academy model. And we really heard two themes from them. They need more time to work together and they wanted examples of integration. So what we did was that we got together and we thought of this idea of an integration showcase to use some of the great project ideas that had been happening within the house of Minuteman to show other staff members. And unfortunately, staff members sometimes get so hooked up within their departments, they might not even know what's going on in the classroom next to them. So we thought it'd be an excellent idea to ask the staff to volunteer some of their integration projects and we would showcase them on one of the Professional Development Wednesdays when we had that block of time with other students. So if you guys look at your packet, you can see that we separated the staff into two teams. So by their academies, so we had the Life Sciences and Service Academy and we also had the Engineering, Constructions and Trade Academy. We had them go to one presentation. So you guys can see the presentations are listed. We had projects such as history and phys ed, they worked together. I will tell you that the senior projects stole the show. We had two seniors from engineering and robotics work together. Actually, one is with us right now, Jonathan right over there. And they worked on a submarine called Hydron. So they had a submarine that actually ran in the school pool, which was really cool as their senior project. So that was awesome to see. We had some other ones. We had children's books, which was a collaboration between Early Ed, Design and Visual Communication, the library and the English department. So the students in Early Ed wrote the children's books. The DBC, the Design and Visual Communication, actually illustrated those children's books, working with the students in Early Ed. The English department helped us with editing. We also had an author come in, the author read the drafts. She gave feedback to the students. So it was just an awesome way to showcase some of these projects we were working on. If any of you were able to make it to the play, another great example of integration happening within Minuteman, between all the trades working together on the set, all the student work that went into that. Cosmetology did a great lesson on cutting of angles. So they actually used an orange with toothpicks coming out of it to show 90-degree hair angles. So they worked with the math department to teach them how to cut at a 90-degree angle, which was pretty cool. At the end of the showcase, we did send out a survey to staff and asked them some questions about how the day went for them. One of the questions we asked feedback for was how did the showcase help you visualize or brainstorm ideas for your own integration? I just wanted to share too, the responses we got. One staff member said, "I never realized how many people from vastly different programs are working together with students. I felt energized and eager to become involved with this myself." Another staff member said, "This showcase showed creative ideas for integration instead of just an academic teacher helping out in a career tech area. The final projects made me excited to do more integration projects. It showed me how beneficial it can be to student learning." At the end of the survey, we asked staff members to rank us, or the presentation, on a system from one to five stars of how helpful they found this integration in terms of giving them ideas for integrations themselves. We averaged a 4.24 rating, which I thought was great for our first year trying this showcase. So we were very happy with that. We hope to make it a yearly event, so staff members will know next year we're going to be looking to showcase more integration projects. So start collaborating with others, get their ideas done, and maybe they can be presenters for the following years to come. So that was our integration survey. Amy's going to talk to you a little bit about Minuteman 101. Thank you. So you've heard Katie talk about our buckets of work before, one of them being Minuteman 101. It's a freshman class. We got the idea when we traveled down to Nashville and looked at the academies down there and brought it back. Last summer, we did some summer work developing curriculum. We're going to fine tune a little of that over the summer this year as well. And then starting in the fall, are actually going to put Minuteman 101 into the schedule. So during the first half of the year, during their exploratory schedule where freshmen are, you know, going through seven different vocational areas every other week, Minuteman 101 will rotate in with that. So every freshman student will have the opportunity to participate in Minuteman 101 for a week long. So that's about 25 content hours worth of work. So there's a lot to get done in a short amount of time. The areas that we're going to focus on are financial literacy, executive functioning skills, so that's study skills in organization, career and future planning, character development, brief orientation into Minuteman and what it's like to be a Minuteman student and be part of our culture, some work with critical thinking skills and work around mindfulness. So we're still kind of fine tuning how many hours go with each subject. The great thing is we have a lot of subject matter experts in the building. So that's who's going to be giving the instructions to students. And I think that's really great for Minuteman because freshmen will get to develop more relationships with other adults in the building that they might not actually see through the course of their freshman year, especially the first semester. So it won't be their English teacher, it won't be their history teacher, it might be somebody else in the building. So we're really excited. It's going to be the first year, I'm sure we're going to learn a lot by how it works and kind of tweak it as we go along, but really excited that it's in the schedule and that freshmen are going to get kind of a sense of what Minuteman's like right from the start. Expectations of what we expect for Minuteman students as well.
Questions?
Thanks. And just as you do this this first year, if you could keep in the back of your mind whether there's some pieces that could be pulled out that would sort of help in the application process or for things that we could promote to prospective students. I mean, that's a project we're after, you've gone through the first year.
No, that's great.
Just sort of keep that in mind.
Thank you.
Okay, just as a comment from a high school teacher to different high schools, I think that all high schools could make use of this kind of introductory course which covers those topics. I think it would be beneficial, certainly in South Orion and all the other high schools I've had the privilege of observing. So very excited, I look forward to it and hearing how the freshmen perceive it in their first attempt at this conference, not so far away.
Are there thoughts about integrating some of the upperclassmen into a mentor-mentee relationship into the one-on-one? I find specifically with my kids, sometimes direction from adults and how they work in the real world are better perceived by their peer group.
I agree with you, and the short answer is yes, there's been some thought. Not how we're going to do that yet, but have thought about it. And there's a few of us that are thinking of how to come up with, whether it's a Minuteman like, you know, 201 or something like that for the upperclassmen and how we can integrate the two. So it's starting to be thought.
Anything else?
Thank you.
Thank you very much, and thank you, good luck with that. Very happy to hear your update and look forward to hearing another one in September, October. Thank you. So, would somebody like to make a motion on item five? Like, yes, Alex, thank you.
I move to request that I participate in the school choice program for 2017 to 18 through the fourth. Department of Elementary and Education, the Department of Children, the Department of Arts.
Second, very well. We have discussed this already last meeting, but we can certainly discuss it again for this meeting if anybody's interested. Okay, hearing no further discussion, ready for the vote on favor of the motion on table. Please raise your hand up. One, two, three, four. I have two minutes, thank you very much. Principals report, Principal Millen. No, excuse me, I skipped.
No, excuse me, I skipped.
Are we having a NEAS progress report and a DESI new program approvals discussion, or is that...
I'll take the NEAS section.
Great.
Mr. Chairman, do you recall that back in November of 2012, the school was placed on warning status by the New England Association of Schools and Colleges, which is the accreditation body for the six New England states. Warning did not indicate that we were less than accredited. We continued our accreditation status, but it indicated that we were deficient in one of the standards, the loading standards in NEAS, the one standard being facilities. So we received, because of the progress being made on the building, in April 25th, a letter from Bruce Severs, Director of the Public Schools Committee on Technical and Career Institutions, a letter taking us off warning status because of the work of this committee and the School Building Committee to move the project forward. So that's good news, and we just wanted to make sure you were there.
Thank you very much. Good. And new program approvals, is that Michelle Rochambeau, say something like that?
Me. That is me. Should I...
You can all sit down somewhere at the seat. Is it any of these seats?
So, well, as you all have probably heard, that the approval process is in two parts, Part A and Part B. So Part A, we have already been approved in both programs. And what that means is we can move on to Part B. Part A is probably the most challenging piece of the application process, because that's where we need to have student survey, you know, a student need for the program. We've got to do the labor market analysis. We have to look at, you know, emerging technologies. We have to get letters of support from business and industry. We've got to have an advisory board. We have to show that they've met, that they've recommended the program. So in Part A, we met that criteria, and we were accepted to move on to Part B. And Part B is due on Friday, Friday for both programs, for the multimedia engineering and the advanced manufacturing. So most of everything is together. It's just this year, the department wants everything electronic, which has been a lot of fun for me, to make sure that it's a lot of information that they want, and the information this time is more about Minuteman. It's about our processes, our application process, curriculum, our teacher, the facilities, the equipment, you know, all of those things that make Minuteman a school. And some of it is, you know, I'm not going to be able to answer right now, but what happens with Part B, it will go in on Friday electronically, if I can, if there's a way to transmit all this information, but it will go in on Friday. And then we have, at that point, there's some back and forth, that goes back and forth with the Department of Ed, because if there's something that's missing, they're going to ask me for it. Because we haven't hired a teacher yet for either one of the programs, you know, they'll put that on, they'll wait until we have a teacher. Same thing with curriculum, because I really want to have a teacher in place to start working on the curriculum, although we do have a framework for that. But, you know, we have to develop a curriculum from that, and I need to have a teacher on board to do that. So some of those pieces, they'll, you know, they'll be ongoing. Final approval for the program, when we can say that Minuteman has these programs, is around the November timeframe. So between now and November, that's when a lot of this work will happen. Most of the information will go into the Department of Ed, and then we'll start doing some back and forth between now and November. And it will include our advisory board, they've got to come in and do a safety check. I mean, you know, there's a lot of things that have to happen between now and then, but this is, I mean, the Part A was the most difficult and most challenging, and Part B is just more time-consuming right now, is just putting all the pieces together. But it's good news, and it's, you know, it's a lot of work, but it's going to be great when we finally have those two programs on board.
Michelle, why is the submission piece not as easy as just scanning a whole bunch of documents and sending it off to them as a PDF?
Well, so what I'm doing is, I'm putting it, just because, I guess, I'm a little bit type A, I want to make sure that when I send them everything, you know, everything is in a row, how they ask for it, and it's all very organized. So, you know, we have some technology here, we've got the Office 365 notebook that I'm using to put everything in, and there's a way for me to send it to the Department of Ed as a PDF, but it'll all be very well organized. That's the only thing. I just want to make sure that I have everything.
I think personally that a little bit of type A is a job requirement for what you're doing.
Yeah, but it drives me crazy.
Any questions on that? Yes.
Okay, so, given November timeframe, does that mean that it's potential that the freshmen, next year's freshmen, could start this program?
The freshmen will, we are bringing, the NEAS manufacturing program will be online in the fall. So the freshmen will be in that program.
So they're going to start that as part of their exploratory, and they'll be the first class to go and start it.
Yeah. So in terms of the teacher right now, I mean, I have a good candidate that I could recommend, but I have two other folks I want to look at that look great on paper. So, I mean, I have no doubts that program is going to be up and running in the fall. So, you know, very excited about that, because I want to see those machines work.
And Sharon.
Yes, I just want to know if those documents that you're talking about, will they be available for us to see online? Will you link to them?
I can, well, I also have everything in, if you can find your hard copy, so I can make that available, or, I mean, if you can have access to Office 365, sure, we can figure out how to do that. And put in the thumb rod.
Relative to your comment about the type A, and your question about organization and presentation and materials, as somebody who sits on board that reviews some pretty significant grant applications, I might rather read, you know, a sort of freestyle narrative of what it is that they do, and what they want to do, and how we might use the money, and what are our goals. But in terms of being able to quantify, to qualify, so that my review is going to be consistent with somebody else's review, having it structured in the way it is requested is hugely helpful. And so I think you're doing the right thing, and you're right to spend the time to organize it that way.
I've worked enough, and I've sent enough documents to the Department of Ed to know exactly how they want it, and they want to see it the way they have it, using the same words, the same format. And I've been successful so far, so...
It's not fun putting it together, because all the creative stuff has really happened before, and now it's reformatting it, but it's been official in the long run.
Any other comments or questions? Thank you very much. And we share your excitement on it. I want to see what those machines actually do after they plug them in and students do anything else. I have no idea what they do. Thank you, Michelle. Thank you, Michelle. Thank you very much. Okay, now, Jack Dillon, Principals' report.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Each of you have a school calendar, 2017-18, in your packet. I think you're prepared tonight to approve that. I just want to go over a couple of very minor changes, if I could. On April 13th, 2018, that's going to be an early release day at 11:21. On November 14th, that was originally scheduled to be our showcase day, in which the eighth graders came to Minuteman to take a look at their, you know, top three choices that they wanted to look at today for a few hours. We're going to move that date from the 14th to the 16th, which is that Thursday. And then the last thing, I really don't have an answer for you just yet, but once again, we're still waiting for DESI to put out the MCAS schedule for 2018. And when that comes out, I'll let Liz know what it is, and we can plug it in, and other than that, the calendar will be ready to go.
So we want a motion to move the calendar as amended, is that correct?
I will make the motion, since I have a second and I've got a question.
Great, question, we'll be right here.
My question is regarding Good Friday, which I see is back on here. How did that go this year, and what do you plan to do with Good Friday next year? It says the offices are closed.
We had, I want to say, 200 students that were out, which was to be expected. Staff attendance was pretty good. We obviously hope that we don't have snow days that would affect that next year.
Okay, so that would be pending, you know, as you get closer to the date.
Absolutely.
Thank you.
Mr. Horton.
Jack, December 3rd says Career Day. That's a Sunday. Is that correct?
That's our Career Open House. Yeah, we typically have it on a Sunday.
On a Sunday.
Yeah. And the reason why we put TBA is, we're flirting with the idea of possibly changing the time. We usually do 12 to 4, but we're looking at some data to see if we should maybe have it from 9 to 12, or some other time earlier in the morning. We've had a midday, and the numbers have been okay, but we're thinking more parents would maybe show up if they could have it done earlier than have the rest of the day for themselves.
Thank you.
Any further questions regarding the motion on the table? Seeing none, bring it to the vote on, in favor of the motion on the table, please raise your hand unanimously. Thank you very much. Great, is that the end of the Principals' report?
It is, thank you.
Thank you so much. Subcommittee reports. Superintendent Negotiations and Evaluations Subcommittee, Dave Horton.
Would you please, oh, sorry. Would you please turn to page 19 in the packet? Or actually, skip to page 20. Before I, I'd like to walk you through a few things. I just want to tell you the general direction's all wrong with this, is that, is that... Survey Monkey will be open tomorrow through May 29th. So the evaluation will be done by Survey Monkey, as has been done the past number of years. And it'll go online tomorrow, and it'll be running through, all the way through the day of May 29th. And we'll send out an email tomorrow to remind people of the date. So that's a little bit about Survey Monkey. Yes?
And then we'll link in that email.
Right. Yeah, there'll be a link there. That's how you'll access Survey Monkey. Liz, one thing I forgot to ask, and I've forgotten about it from the past, can people pause in the middle of doing the evaluation and come back, or do they have to do it all in one sitting? I think it's all in one sitting.
I would imagine it would be the same as last year's.
Which was all in one, that part I couldn't remember.
Yeah, I don't know. I didn't do one of the surveys.
Could you ask Mary Ann then, and just include that in the note? Thank you. We've also, there'll be six rating scales, if you wish. One would be, did not meet, second would be some progress, three is significant progress, four met progress, or met expectations, I should say. And the fifth would have exceeded expectations, and also no opinion. If someone, we added that this year, if you don't have an idea, if you don't think you can make up your mind about anything regarding, none of those other ratings seem appropriate, you can put no opinion. So we'll let you know, so we'll be emailing out tomorrow with the link, and also let you know about whether or not you can pause in the middle. There are also, there are, as we, there are each year, a section for comments, and you can, and that the box for that is expandable, that you, if you want to write, let's say, a page for, I was here suggesting do it on a separate sheet and then send it in separately, and it will be read by the Subcommittee, become part of the document. Any question about those, that particular part of the evaluation? Okay. So looking, looking at page 20, what, on the next three, actually four pages, looking back to back, Dr. McQuillan, Ed McQuillan has already evaluated himself in some respect. If you look at, under the, sort of, two inches down, it'll talk about, you'll see on-target, off-target, non-started, and Ed has rated himself, or checked off. On-target, where the rest, he did what he wanted, he was expected to do, and he's checked that box, and all four, well, all three of the goals, although one is combined, two goals, two districts, two and four is a combination of two. So that's why that's checked off, and you see that he signed it, signed off on page, on page 22. So just focus a moment, if you will, on page, this is in the School Committee, School Committee numbering, page 21. Oh, pardon, back up one page, just look at page 20, under evidence. Now, in your, in this agenda packet, there is, there's an executive summary of how Ed, how Ed viewed meeting his goals, and a lot of backup material, but there are a few, there are a few places, there are a few suggestions, or other places where you can get more material if you want to. For instance, for goal number one, we, he did not, and I, we understand that, did not include the agendas and minutes of all School Committee, School Building Committee meetings, but they're posted on the website, and you can go there if you want more. The same, but the agendas and minutes of the School Committee meeting, you may have it in a book like I do, or if you don't, you can go online, you can go online and read them there. So those are really sort of in addition. If you really want to go that far, that's sort of your prerogative. So just looking, now moving to page 21, the school, under evidence, the school improvement plan is part of the material that you receive in the mail or, or that's online, in other words, it's in this agenda packet. Moving down to leadership goal number three, again, to evidence, all of these, all the items listed there, except for the, the school council presentation are in the packet. I just want to, you may have a little bit of difficulty finding, or recognizing, a brief look at the Academy model. And that starts, that starts on page 47. Also, the School Committee presentation by Katie Smith, it says C Attachment A, and that's also, that is, that starts on page 49. It is an attachment, unless these minutes are approved tonight, you'll see it as a attachment, but her report is the slideshow, or it begins on page 49. And it's really the same, you won't find in the packet, the School Council presentation, but it's virtually the same one that's on page 49. So you have all that. Can you get the page number if you want? Katie's is, School Committee presentation is page 49, the Academy model is 47, running right down the line, Professional Development schedule's page 53, and sampling of meeting minutes is page 55. And the team reports presented to the School Committee, they're on pages 70, on the top, 75 and 76. You just walk yourself through it, and you'll be able to find all of those items. So after, after you digest all of this material, and go online if you feel that you need to and want to, then fill out Survey Monkey and submit that by the 29th, through the 29th. It has to be done by midnight. I'm going to sit up and watch this, and put all the line, I'm cutting it off. Actually, Mary Ann Hamlet, let me. And so after we have all the data, the Subcommittee will meet, will review it, and will bring it, it'll all come back to the School Committee in June, School Committee meeting in June. And those of you on the School Committee, you'll have to remember that we then, based on the evaluation... on the evaluation and how we view, how the School Committee viewed the evaluation, we would recommend or not recommend, or any range, about money from up to 2% of the superintendent's salary. We'll be doing that at the July meeting. We'll be discussing the evaluation data at the June meeting and voting on whether or not we will, we will award him a raise of any kind, because it will be at the July meeting. See anything else I wanted to tell you? I think that's, that's all that I, that I could tell you, how the, the standards and indicators elements relate to one another, but that may be a little superfluous at this point or extreme, so if you have any questions, then I can answer that.
Are there any questions? There's no vote here, so this is just discussion.
Correct, no, just letting this information, letting you know, it's all in the pack, it's all in the packet, the backup data, there's an executive summary that Ed would react to have him do, to help us sort it. Also, if you, if you do have your, if you can quickly, easily access your School Committee Agenda Package, you, or maybe you've noticed all along that Ed has given us reports every month, and he's referenced a goal to which that particular piece of information relates, like tonight, for instance. Under the Superintendent's Report, the Leadership Goal is Student Learning, he cites that, the particular goal to which the, the Report on Skills USA and the work that that group has done where it falls. So he's, he's done that all the way through the school year for us, he might cite it, but we also, knowing that that's sort of difficult to hold on to and to retain, we wanted an executive summary plus personate information to go with the package, so you don't have to go hunting back. But if there's something you think you'd like, okay, obviously, please do that.
So I have two comments, the first comment is, once again, I want to thank you and your team for doing the extraordinary job of dealing with all the bureaucracy and all the pieces that need to be put together to make this work, and also I notice.
Because it's Jennifer and Dave, in case people.
Jennifer and Dave.
They're fine, too.
And I know that they are. And also, also I want to point out that I see some, over the last few years, there've been some great improvements in the material given to us, as the presentation and the accumulation of evidence to help us have fewer I don't knows, and this looks like a huge step up, and have to, I'm going to work my way through this, maybe there won't be, I don't know, any I don't knows this year, that'd be terrific. So I really want to, I really want to acknowledge the improvements that I've seen over the years since you first started doing this.
Also, if anyone, if anyone sees an area for improvement, they'd like to see a change in how we collect information or assemble this, please, you know, keep in mind, let the Commisional Committee know, because that was one that certainly we heard last year and wanted to, we didn't have it, we felt, and wanted to see a change in that, and for your mind, and also just the idea of letting us know, let us think of the whole thing, okay, process.
And is that the end of your report?
Yes.
Thank you, sir, very much. Enrollment Task Force update.
Okay, the Enrollment Task Force consists of Jim, Dave, and Carrie, and Jim, Dave, and I met, had an initial meeting, unfortunately Carrie was not able to join us, and at that we really defined the goal of this task force, being to help, help to find ways that the school, that school committee members can support the admissions process without putting undue pressure or additional work on school staff. So, and that was an important caveat in what we talked about. That said, we did start with saying that one of the things that would be really important is if we did each know what roadblocks existed in our towns, so that then we would know how we could address it. And we did brainstorm kind of a list of items, and our goal was really to come up with a menu of possible ways that all of us as individual school committee members could support the admissions process. You know, everything from setting up meetings in town with town leaders, to going and talking, to PTO meetings, to, you know, intervening if George and the admissions team is having trouble getting into, you know, to make a presentation, or whatever it is. So what we were hoping to be able to do, review this list, and then with the administration, make sure that it's sort of on point, and that, you know, these are things that are doable and that would support the admissions process, and then be able to come back and review it with the full school committee. So anything else you want to add to that?
Yeah, you sent out, I believe you sent out an email today, did that, I, I.
It didn't go to, it was.
Just what do I?
Right, so, so we'll set something up broader to, to everyone.
So Pam, would it be truthful to say that at some point you'll be coming up with a document of suggestions that you're going to present to the full school committee for review, and then a continuation discussion on that?
That is very truthful, yes.
And do you know approximately which timeframe, which month do you believe that that first draft of the document will be available? I'm not holding into this, I'm just trying to get an idea.
I know, that, definitely in June or July, I'd say.
June or July, okay, thank you. Great, so we'll make sure that we put that on the agenda, just let us know, we'll put it on the agenda.
Okay, very, very.
Thank you very much. Any other comments from the membership? Great, thank you very much. Alice DeLuca, Policy Task Force, JLD.
Yeah, so skip along to page 71, please, and 72, which is on the backside. So I received from the school administration, what you see on page 71, plus I added back into it some elements that were in the boilerplate from MAC. So look on page 72, this is the boilerplate that was originally provided by the MAC for the Guidance Program Policy. And then on page 71 is the administration's iteration of that, and I added back this material. And the reason why I added it back in, it's all unlined, is because the way it read to me was that the guidance decisions, the guidance department was deciding for the student in a couple of places, rather than helping the student to make a choice. If you look at the paragraph under number four, it says guidance services will include testing and assessment, and I added advice and assistance with placement, because otherwise it would be, will include placement in academic course and career intent. And to me, Minute Man has always been kind of the school of a second chance for a lot of kids to make a new skin for themselves, and part of that process has to be self-realization, understanding of what they need, and coming up with a placement for them without their input wouldn't make sense to me. So I added it back in, and I added back in assistance with, before, individual student career plans, again, I felt that that needed to be addressed. The reason I added one through four back in, because they were kind of higher level principles of guidance that I thought were valuable, the guide guidance, basically, to remind us all of the individual differences of students and not just talk about, and that's a goal of guidance. So that's what happened here, and I would like to ask if we can adopt it for first reading, and then, you know, I didn't, I didn't receive any comments also about it, and then if there are things that need to be changed, that would come up in the next session.
I will move that we set the first reading on Policy JLD. Second.
Discussion.
If the school administration has any, any, you know, argument to make about removing any of this stuff, no, it's fine, okay, you have no problems with it, so we're all, we're all public set.
My only comment, Alice, is that on number two, conditions may be improved, that seems a little ambiguous to me, which conditions may be improved?
I don't think they constrain that, no.
Well, what do they mean by conditions may be improved?
I think the conditions is that the student is confronted with maybe equivalent threats in school.
I think that the, I also, I think that's probably what it meant, it probably should be specified a little bit more, because it could be interpreted very ambiguously.
What is, what is a detrimental way to interpret this that makes it worth changing?
Well, conditions being improved, does that mean that the walls need to be painted? Is there ugly, is how the conditions?
It's subjective.
That would, that would not be on the student level, on the building or structure.
Talks about helping individuals understand themselves.
Right, and I, well.
It's all referring back to that.
I'm just saying that to me, that one sentence was ambiguous as to what meant conditions may be improved.
I have that a little bit of that feeling, not sure.
I did when I read it, but then I actually enjoyed the fact that it was beyond specific, and I actually thought about, well, what does that mean? Like, what conditions can be improved? Are we talking about for the students' life? Can we actually do that? Can we, what can we improve for this student? So it actually allowed me to escape from bureaucratic nature of policy. And so I had that same kind of jolt when I read it.
This point's an idea. Right. This point's an idea. We hope we can do this.
Yeah, so if we can, we can change that up and make it more specific.
I don't, you have to make it more specific, just if you, you could probably come up with language that, that allows the reader to understand more of what you meant, and make it quite general as well. I think a few more words would probably make it better. I want to, I'll try to come up with something. Now, C says smart, she doesn't want to.
It's their lawyers who did this, you know, well.
There you go.
It's a nay, it's not a shall statement, it's one of these wishy-washy statements.
They're not.
It's subjective.
It's a maybe.
Or perhaps it can be improved. All right, so that's a question that has been raised, I'll start from that, any others?
Seeing no further discussion, all in favor of the motion on the table to accept this for first reading, and passes unanimously with now 10 members here, is that correct?
Yep. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Alice. Secretaries' Report, back to Dave Horton.
Not hearing any suggestions for amendments or additions or deletions or whatever from the minutes of April 4th, I move that we approve the past minutes, that, I move that the minutes of April 4th, 2017, be approved as presented.
Any discussion? Move to the vote, all in favor of the motion on the table, raise your hand, passes, was everybody else, did you guys, I guess it passes unanimously. Thank you very much, and it's before 8:00. We actually accomplished a lot, we saw a lot of students for one, which is always fun. Motion to adjourn? Yes. Second, all in favor of the motion, I think, up, 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 up. See you in June. Pass your tags down, or collect.